Members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings that are held twice monthly. And I know we have Commissioner Thompson, we have Commissioner Bangs. Commissioner Toyoka just joined. And hopefully Commissioner Webb will be able to join us shortly. With that, we'll go ahead and get started with the board communications, and I'll start with Commissioner Thompson.
It was a beautiful day in the neighborhood. You may be familiar with it. I'm getting extra back on this.
Can I have everybody that isn't speaking to mute? Your phone or your laptop, please?
Thank you. It was a beautiful day in the neighborhood, and it's a beautiful neighborhood where I live. There has been an evaluation, and we have, I think it's Class 8 view sheds, which is the very highest. This makes it very popular with people who want to come and visit. What I saw along US Highway 101 gave me great concerns. I saw that signs, no parking signs had been erected around Hug Point and Arcadia Beach State Parks. However, beyond those signs where parking was not safe, because it had to be in culverts and up the edges of hillsides, parking was, was, parking was happening anyway. And there was this very sweet romantic couple walking hand in hand with their backs to traffic in the lane of highway traffic on US 101. You can imagine my consternation. So I think that whatever we see in terms of population growth in Oregon, whatever we see in terms of the popularity for visitors who want to come particularly to South Clotsop, South Clotsop County, I'd say from Seaside South, but all the way up and down the coast and other places in the county as well, this is an ongoing issue with these surges. So how do we negotiate them for everyone's safety and happiness and well-being? That continues to be my concern. It also continues to be my concern that I have a neighbor who wants to have campfires morning, noon, and night across the street from me, and then there's other folks who want to do the same thing north from me. So camping permitted or unpermitted by property owners within the county is a concern to me. The impact of fire danger is also a concern to me. So I'm glad that we are dealing with all of those issues bit by bit. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Thompson. I'll move to Commissioner Bangs.
Can you hear me? Okay.
We can hear you.
Awesome. My computer is, yeah. Anyhow, just a brief update. I attended the FTL AC Committee meeting on Friday and discussed the HCP, the Habitat Conservation Plan, and the future FMP, which is the Forest Management Plan, with ODF there presenting. And the discussion led to the fact that ODF has found some verbiage within their HCP that may be a bit constraining for them and their, their harvest practices after the, the plan, if passed, is in place. And so they're spending some time reviewing their plan while it is in the NEPA process and hopefully being able to change some of the verbiage. I express concern that they have kind of painted themselves into a corner in some of their, their very specific verbiage and in regards to operation logging costs. And they responded with, with that they are reviewing it and they are hopefully being able to edit it. That remains to be seen. Prior to it leaving the NEPA process and for approval, there will be another public information, or not public, there'll be another public comment moment where we can, we can reach out and place public comment. But if any fellow commissioners have any verbiage concerns, they are open to emails regarding the verbiage within their, their HCP. And so I'm going to take a moment probably myself and just highlight some of my, my areas of concern that I have in regards to our logging operational costs and the future of our county in regards to the passage of the HCP. And in a nutshell, I still think that the February meeting and email, that they're not going to move our boundaries, but I think that we have an option to express concern over the verbiage. So that was in regards to that meeting on Friday. If you guys have any questions, you can feel free to, to give me an email or a phone call, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, so.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioner Bangs, for that update. We'll move now to Commissioner Toyoka.
Good afternoon, everyone. So after our three-day weekend here, Memorial Day kind of kicks off the beginning of tour season here on the Oregon coast. And I think it kind of highlights a few things that, you know, is from traffic counts to different activities that go on. And it's, I welcome that. It's a good, good way of seeing some of the things that we've been talking about in play, from traffic impacts and studies. And we'll see the impacts of COVID, you know, in the tour season. So hopefully with the, the work that their county health and, you know, Margot and her team have done, you know, I'm a believer in that herd immunity, and I hopefully we don't see a spike, and it proves it correct over time here. We've got some constituent correspondence on traffic and some safety issues. Was able to talk to Ted McLean, and he gave you some great clarity. So, you know, thank you to the staff, you know, fulfilling me on, kind of catching me up on information on how we're interacting with some of these impacts of traffic during influx of additional traffic due to tourism. And then I also talked to Dawn this week, our county manager, about a letter that kind of aligns us, was actually last week, aligns us with the CDC and the policies for COVID and masking. And I hope, I think all of you saw that letter, so you know, hopefully we can discuss that and see what happens with that. And so that's all I have as far as update.
Thank you for the update, Commissioner Toyoka. We'll go to Commissioner Webb.
I'm sorry, did you say Webb? Yes. My man standing. I really, I don't have anything, but I am getting some, some feedback from constituents, especially as I talk to local business owners about what they consider is inconsistent and not always very clear information about what's going on in the pandemic. So I, I think, I mean, I give, I always give people the county website information, you know, links, et cetera. But I wonder if maybe we need to be doing more, maybe with a paper or, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but there is, there are complaints about lack of clarity is, is the big issue. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. We will have a public health update on our agenda today, along with a legislative update, discussion on short-term rental ordinances, and public safety communications plan. We will have a discussion between staff, reports from staff, questions from the commission, but we won't have any public comment. Those are reserved for our regular meetings, just so everybody knows. And then after those four items, we will adjourn into executive session. That will evaluate the employment-related performance of chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, employee, or staff member who does not request an open hearing per ORS 192.660 subset 2 subset I. So that will be including, or that will be after our regular work session items. With that, do we have a legislative update? It's Philip here.
I'm not seeing him on here, and I've sent him both an email and a text. And so I don't know if maybe Dawn wants to do the public health update.
Or the legislative update?
No, the public health update, and then I will try calling Phil one more time.
Gotcha. Okay.
Chair Quilam members of the board. I mean, I just go back to Commissioner Toyoka's comment about a letter that was prepared. It was included in the Friday update. And a number of counties have been reaching out to the governor regarding some of the workplace OSHA requirements regarding masking, masking verification. And so if you could take a look at that, or if you'd like to discuss that, that is fine. But at this point, staff is just trying to get input from individual board members to see if we have a letter that would represent the majority of the board, all of the board, or some combination thereof. So, so that's one thing. I know the, the other is that, you know, we are, staff can, continues to work really hard with the vaccination efforts. Last I saw, we were over 60% in the vaccination rates between 16 and above. You know, we're working hard to get to that 65% number. I think that there is light, and we will, we will be there sooner than later. So there's a number of efforts with, with, with more of the school age set as well as the ongoing 18 and older. So, so that works, that work continues. I think some of the clarity or lack of clarity on some of the rules is that having traveled recently, every state is responding differently to the CDC guidelines. And so even when you cross the bridge, it's a lot different up on the Washington side than the Oregon side. And so it has created a level of complexity to, to the workplaces. And so right now within Oregon, you know, if you're not going to validate or verify vaccination, pretty much everybody will be wearing a mask. And so, and that's where a lot of businesses have been feeling pressure is to take on that additional role of actually validating and verifying vaccination. So, and there are penalties within Oregon. And so that's another facet that I think a lot of businesses don't feel comfortable with. So, so there's just a level of complexity. You know, we aren't seeing the number of positive cases, but what we are seeing is that ongoing challenge, and it will continue of just vaccinating as many people as we can. A lot of the folks that have been motivated to be vaccinated have been vaccinated. So now it's, it's addressing the school-aged set as well as trying to get some of those that may be a little hesitant to become vaccinated. So, so that's the public health update in a nutshell. But I'm, I'm happy to take any questions, and if there's any comments about the draft letter, I'd be happy to also answer those.
I see Commissioner Thompson has a question.
Thank you, and thank you for clarifying County Manager Boone. I had looked at that letter, but then I went to last week's letter and looked at that one as well. I got a little twisted here. I think it's a good idea that, that the counties ask the governor for clarification, because like Commissioner Webb, I hear consternation in the community about they're not sure what the rules are. And I think that changes over time. I think it changes over geography. It's a, it's an extremely amorphous set of rules, and they're constantly changing. So whatever we can do to act in concert with our colleagues in the other counties to get that clarity, because I think the governor's office is probably struggling as well. I don't know anybody who's having a good time with COVID, I'll tell you that. I like the letter. I like the concept that we don't put it on our businesses to be the enforcement arm. On the other hand, I don't know how we have enforcement then. There can only be community conversations, is what it seems to me. I know when I went into Costco and had forgotten my mask, I was asked, are you vaccinated? I said, oh, I am, and I'm fully vaccinated, and I forgot my mask. They had one for me. So I think cooperative conversations are the way to go, and we should support those conversations. I think the letter does that, so I support the letter.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Toyoka?
Just to, you know, add a little more clarity to the, what's going on, you know, as an employer, you know, we saw, we get this, all the information from OSHA as far as the validation process. And the problem is that there, there's certain requirements that they don't detail at all. And then there's no training, and there's no real, you know, how do you, what do you look for? How do you train your people to look for what is proper vaccination? The dates, the Moderna, the Pfizer, what are the different rules? There's inconsistency of how to actually validate someone. And then, you know, the, the worst side is there's penalties, like, you know, Manager Boone said, there's almost $13,500 penalty per occurrence. So without proper, you know, training and education on how to do it, you have a huge liability for small businesses that could be very devastating. And then the other part of the story is inconsistency. You know, you, like, Commissioner, I mean, County Manager Boone alluded to you can travel, and there's different policy. You know, we went to Costco, like Commissioner Thompson the other day, and they said, are you, are you vaccinated? Yes. Oh, no mask required. Go ahead, go in, enjoy. You know, and then the next door business, you know, they don't want to validate, or they, they see that. And so everybody still has to be masked, but it is very inconsistent. And I just think we should be following a consistent profile. Like, you know, Commissioner Webb and Thompson said, we got to provide clarity for people. Here's one, you know, if the CDC says this is what it is, we need to have one voice, one clear, concise avenue for everyone. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Mr. Bangs?
Is my mic working?
It is.
Okay. I'm sorry. My computer's not telling me when I'm working or not. So I agree with both Commissioner Toyoka and Commissioner Thompson in regards to clarity, in regards to the large amount of pressure that is putting on small businesses. I just had a side conversation with my boss and director regarding a future event that we're going to be holding. And I basically point blank said, I don't want to put any of our volunteers or any of our staff in a position where they would be in a potential conflict. And because people are so sensitive, there's diverse feelings and thoughts and opinions regarding this entire pandemic. And we've, we've rode all of those different thoughts and walks of life. And I don't want to personally put any of our, our staff here where I work into a position where they would be in a conflict. I mean, it's not, it's not safe. It's not, it's just, it's not safe. And it's, it's definitely not healthy. And so that, that's just my, my personal opinion in regards to, to what I'm seeing around us. And, and where, you're right, there, it's all, like, every, the translations are different. One person may read something and translate it one way. Another person may read something and translate it another. And so seeking clarity is, is something that I fully support, but I also fully support how the letter was written. And I just hope that, for the sake of our small businesses here in our community, and for the sake of the employees, that we can get some sort of resolution from the governor. Because I, I'm concerned, I'm highly concerned about the impact that this will have on, on employees, because it's often not the manager standing out there asking those questions. It's the lowest-paid employee or, or one of the minimum wage employees. And I look at my children, and they're, they're almost of age to start working, and I wouldn't want them in that position. So, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Any other comment? I certainly support the letter, support the defense of our local businesses. I believe that the warning week has now gone away and that we could very well be moving into another category this Friday, depending on the case count from the weekend. If we have less than three cases, I believe we will be in the lower category. So that would be very good news. But we will know definitively probably this, this evening. Any other comments, questions? Okay. We'll go ahead and conclude the public health update. Any luck with Philip on the legislative update?
I did just get back a message from him. He's still in meetings with Ways and Means, and they're wrapping up paperwork, but he was unable to get out. But they did send out an, an email just letting everybody know that the second chamber work session deadline is winding, has wind, is winding down after, sorry. All the committees have begun to wind down after Friday's second chamber work session deadline, and the bills have now either moved to Ways and Means to address fiscal impact, or they're going to the chamber floor for a vote. So things are continuing to move forward, and he will make sure that he gets us something more formal and writing. And again, he apologizes for not being able to get out of this meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you, Monica. Appreciate that. I see we had a couple of callers join us. I think, if you could mute your phones, please, if you joined us late here to prevent feedback. We'll move on to item three, which is the short-term rental ordinances review. It's on page three of the packet, and I'll turn it over to Gail Hendrickson, if she is here.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Commissioners. Gail Hendrickson, hey. Community Development Director. And just for the benefit of everyone who's tuned in today, just a little bit of background so we understand how we've gotten to the point where we're at right now. So in 2018, in January, the board adopted ordinance 1801, which created this short-term rental ordinance that covers all of the unincorporated county except for Arch Cape. And Arch Cape has had its own short-term rental ordinance in effect since 2003. And over the years, the staff has implemented ordinance 1801. We've been working to refine it so that it's easier to implement, that its provisions are clearer, and that we're better able to enforce it. And as a result, we've amended the ordinance twice since it was adopted in 2018. And based on complaints that we began receiving once this ordinance was enacted, we started in 2020 holding quarterly meetings with different communities around the county. First of all, so that people understood what our code compliance process was and how it operated, but also a chance for staff to hear what was going on in the communities and understand what the concerns were from, from all community members. So after about six months of these listening sessions and discussions around the county, we came forward in February of this year with some proposed revisions to the ordinance. And we got some feedback from the board on February 24th. We went back and made some more revisions to the proposed ordinance, and then scheduled it again for April 20th. And in between that timeframe of February to April, as you all recall, we got quite a bit of communication from community members representing a diverse range of concerns and issues that they wanted to bring to our attention. And so when the board met on April 20th, at that time, you asked for, for a brief stay on work that staff was doing. And during that time, since April 20th, staff has been working to look, looking at different scenarios to bring back to the board about how we can proceed and to develop a process and a timeframe for doing that. And so in Exhibit A of your staff report, there is a matrix that's got six different scenarios on it, and ranging from sort of the easiest and least restrictive up to some of the most restrictive changes that we could be discussing. With the lowest one, just maintaining the status quo, looking at a possible temporary moratorium, looking at how we can strengthen our existing regulations and better enforce them. And then also combining those two short-term rental ordinances, the one for Arch Cape and the one that covers the rest of the county. And then on the more restrictive side, looking at adding short-term rentals to the actual zoning code itself and possibly require public hearings every time someone wanted to obtain a short-term rental permit. And then probably one of the most restrictive would be to limit or prohibit short-term rentals in certain zones or geographic areas of the county. And those are laid out with the pros and cons in that matrix in Exhibit A. What staff would recommend, what we're recommending this afternoon for discussion purposes, is that the, the board consider a temporary six-month moratorium on new short-term rental licenses. That would go into effect September 1st and remain in place through February 28th of next year. And during that time, staff would be working with the board and the public to prepare revisions to the ordinance and to combine our two short-term rental ordinances. And all total, that entire process would take about nine months. Part of the reason for the length is that we have to do a 45-day notice before we adopt a moratorium. We have to send that to Department of Land Conservation and Development. And then based upon revisions that may come out of the process, we may also be required to notify all property owners under a Measure 56 notice. That's also required by the state. And so that will add some additional time into the process. What we would like to have as the goal for any revisions that we do end up making is developing a better balance between the quality of life concerns and the impacts that short-term rentals can have on a residential neighborhood, but also recognizing that there are investments that short-term rental owners have made and trying to find a better balance between the two. And so we've also scheduled into the process several public comment periods. Some of those would be via written public comment, where we just have an open period where people could submit their comments to us. Some of those would be possibly in the style of town hall board work sessions where we could obtain some additional public input. And really today, depending on how the board gives staff direction, then we'll either make some more revisions to this process and bring it back to, to you for further review. Or if you're happy with the process, the way it's laid out, then we would begin the steps to implement that. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for our Community Development Director? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. Thank you, Community Development Director Hendrickson. The title "Community Development", I think describes what should be the goal, the intention, and the, the promise that infuses whatever deliberations we have. I began working on the regulation of transient occupancy. Well, I tried as a, just a neighbor. I wasn't effective. I've lived in the neighborhood since 1999 and had concerns since shortly after the turn of the millennium, when the internet came into play. What I saw was that the, the character of a neighborhood was changing, and I wanted to do something about it. We've all been working, I want to say groping toward a solution since then. I've seen some things that have given me hope. I've seen some things that have given me cause for concern. I think there's no doubt that county government in Astoria and the commissioners all around Clotsop County understand that there's an issue with transient occupancy. That gives me hope. They're willing to engage with it. That gives me hope. Because it took me about three years as, as a county commissioner, 15, 16, 17, to get my colleagues to agree to deal with this at all. Before I came on the County Board of Commissioners, they told me, Leanne, we're going to do away with Arch Cape design review because it is creating such legal problems for the county that we're at risk for a lawsuit. Okay, couldn't do anything about that. I was going to be outvoted in that. I told my colleagues, my fellow commissioners, all right, I'll vote with you on this issue, colleagues, because I do think that we have to address legal concerns. But what I want is an avenue, a conduit for neighborhoods. for neighborhood livability concerns to come to the County Board of Commissioners. That's why there is in the ordinance today, the ability for the county to recognize community organizations. A recognized community organization serves as a conduit for information to come to and from neighbors to the county. So those are all progress. That's all hopeful. What gives me enormous concern is that the character of the interactions that I see in my neighborhood are heartbreaking to me. As I said, we live in a Class 8 view shed. We live in a beautiful place. We are privileged to live part time, full time as owners, as renters in a beautiful place. But here's the thing about Oregon law. Everybody can come and visit that place. They are public beaches. With the increase in population, we are going to see more and more people coming to the coast. We're going to see them coming to state parks. We're going to see them coming all over the place. So they're going to be coming to our neighborhood too. The idea that we can control other people's access to our little piece of paradise and make whatever our opinion is into law just doesn't work. And I've seen that become what I think is an increasing dynamic. What also gives me cause for concern is I would say the cruelty, the malice that has been involved. The idea that if someone is unkind enough to another human being, they can work their will on them, that's not positive. That's not grace filled, that doesn't express what we need to do to deal with the challenges that we're all facing. That may be part of the larger culture. It may be particular to my neighborhood. It may be some combination of that. When I see what staff has done, I am grateful for the logic and the precision of their recommendations. Good work on that, on that staff. What I think is incumbent on the County Board of Commissioners as leaders for staff, as people who are directly accountable to voters, but indirectly accountable for everybody who comes to Clatsop County for whatever period of time and does whatever they do here. I think it's up to us to set the tone, which should be constructive, collaborative, positive conversations. We should be curious about what other people see and want and want to do. That's missing right now. Or at least it's conspicuous at some times in its absence. So I'm looking for my colleagues on the County Board of Commissioners to establish the tone, which is collaborative, which is in creating good neighbors. From that, we can apply the laws. But until we get to that, we aren't going to have enough money to pay the staff to resolve the conflicts that are going to happen all over Clatsop County, but particularly in my neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I certainly share your opinion that we want a collaborative approach. I see Commissioner Banks has her hand up. Commissioner Banks?
Um, so I'm looking at our agenda packet that was given out. And I see in our Clatsop County Code Compliance, under the Short Term Rental Complaint Hotline, I see the location of the complaint, the number of complaints and the violation. What I'm not seeing is the resolution or the turnaround time in communication. And so now granted, I know that some of these that are listed other may or may not apply to code compliance or some other type of complaint type, I guess. But what I'm hoping to see is the resolution. Was there a mediation? Was there, did law? By, did, did the Department of Mental Health stop by for the failing septic? So to see the resolution that occurred after the complaint. And if no resolution, then no resolution. The other comment I had was most of the complaint types that we have are code compliance. Am I correct?
A lot, they're probably about 50/50. Things like noise, animal complaints. Fire complaints are outside of what code compliance will enforce or can enforce. Things like over occupancy, operating without a license, those are failing subject. Those are things that we can enforce. So there, it probably averages out to be 50/50.
Okay. And are we, I guess, are we enforcing code compliance with those situations?
We always investigate every complaint and it's logged in. So even if we get a noise complaint, we will open a case file on it. We'll drive by the property. If it's still not an ongoing complaint, then we close the case.
Okay. Okay. Do we have in, I know, I've been looking at a lot of different SDR regulations and I noticed one in Bend, which I really liked. Basically because I feel like Bend has been doing SDRs for a really long time and has had a large amount of experience. And do we have a good neighbor clause for our SDR permit holders?
We do send out notices. We don't have really a good neighbor clause, like I think Bend has, or that we would use in our resource lands when people develop their, no written statement that they sign and really that says you will be a good neighbor, but just the ordinance itself.
Okay, just the ordinance itself. Okay. I, this, I'll be frank, this entire topic is extremely difficult. Being that I've had experience living next to another homeowner who has rented their home and the renters were difficult in the past. And, and so I feel for that side of the coin. But I also am very aware of the other side of a coin where the landowner is wishing to have their land, their property be an SDR. And so I, this is this, I would like additional time for us to hear from the public. But I also think that a moratorium on future permits is also a good idea at this moment while we, while we decide. Rather than adding more potential issues to our nest, just pressing pause on adding any more SDRs for the moment and allowing us to get our feet on the ground and, and develop a nice, solid process for both sides of this coin. But also being aware that our decision is not just for Falcon Cove or for a specific area, it's countywide. And that we need to make sure that we are thinking countywide and not just isolating our thoughts to one specific area.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. And I agree with that. Commissioner Webb?
I'm sorry, I'm having navigational issues this morning. First of all, I would like to thank our staff for a really terrific report. I felt that this was a really thorough and just a very thorough report. And anytime that we are given a series of recommendations for ways to go forward, I'm always pleased. The other thing I'd like to address is Commissioner Thompson's comments. Because I think they're so important. Just in the general mood in our community. We have to, I think probably uniquely, probably not in Oregon, but, but in some counties in this country. We have a unique focus in that one of our major economic sectors is tourism. And so we almost, we have, you know, our publics vary tremendously in their business ownership and who their constituents are and who their customers are. And therefore, our constituency is very varied. And I think that we have to be very compassionate and, and listen very well to all of the voices that we're hearing. I think we have been spending so much time on this in the last couple of years that I'm not, I'm not ready for a long public process. We have, we have about 150 comments, don't we, Gail? From, from, from our constituents, all centered in this neighborhood. And even though I always like to combine ordinances into omnibus efforts, I think the nature of short term rentals in the Arch Cape and Falcon Cove area is radically different than it would be in Jewel. Or, as I noticed, thanks for the map, incidentally, I didn't realize there were so many along the river as well. And we haven't, we haven't heard from those people. At least we haven't. I mean, I don't think any of our comments, Gail, have come from outside of Arch Cape, right? I mean, not that I'm aware of.
Sunset Lake is the other big area in the Clatsop Plains.
Yeah, but that's, right, right. Okay, well, I'm just, I'm asking for, I think, a short term moratorium in Arch Cape and Falcon Cove is an excellent idea. And I think that the issues in the more, in the less densely populated parts of the county are going to be quite different. And so I do think it's time for us to turn our attention there. Especially with the summer season coming up. And, you know, I think we're becoming a lot more aware of the issue, for instance, of boat launches along the Columbia River and other things that might be attracting people in the more rural parts of the county. So I guess my rec, I would be most content with a moratorium right away, as soon as possible. Secondly, I would like us to begin to talk to the rest of the county and to see what the issues are there. I feel like we have a very good handle on what the issues are in Arch Cape and Falcon Cove. We have very well put together public comments and I think they've been very well summarized by our staff here. So I don't think it matters to me whether I, whether we should have two different ordinances for Arch Cape, Falcon Cove and the rest of the county. If we study the rest of the county issues, we may find that separate ordinances are a good idea. I don't know. But, but I do think that we need to start talking about the rest of the county and that we need to do something to slow down the malice that we're seeing coming out of Falcon Cove and Arch Cape. And I too, in my entire time on the commission, I have been very upset about the willingness of, of some of our residents who, they're very willing to say very harsh and disparaging things about us and about their neighbors. And so if there's a way that Commissioner Thompson can help us soften that dialogue and respect that compassion and that we all need to be showing each other. I would really like to encourage and thank her for, for calling us to be better angels. And so I think, I think that's my, I think that's my speech.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Webb. Any other public comment? So what's being recommended from staff? Six month moratorium, short term rental licenses effective September 1st through February 28th. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am impelled to respond by Commissioner Webb's call. I will do everything I can to move the hearts and minds of my neighbors. What I see is that there is a tendency to believe that one's own opinion is the only thing that matters and that one's perception of the fact is the truth. What I see that's called for is a more compassionate, a more tender, a more curious and open approach to one's neighbors. Because absent that, we get into warfare. That's, that's what I want to see. I also support a moratorium because I think in labor negotiations, it's called a cooling off period. We need a cooling off period, I think. So I would like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Bangs?
Um, just in regards to the moratorium, it would be in, the moratorium would be towards prevention of new permits being approved and not a moratorium against SDRs. That way we're not creating take, correct? Okay, good. I'm seeing the head nods. Excellent. I wanted to make sure that there was that clear. Thank you. Make sure that there was that clarification. And then in regard, I had a question for Gail. Gail, how many SDR permits do we have requests for in a year? What's the average?
I really don't know the answer to that, Commissioner Banks. I couldn't find an answer and get back to you, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Because I'm looking at the other options that you've provided and one of them is being that any SDR permit would come before, approval would come before the board. Opening it up for potential public comment and also mediation would be my thought process. Positive communication between neighbors. And so that was just why I asked is I didn't want to add, you know, 17 to 20 additional work sessions onto the plate of the commissioners because we're already work sessioning like crazy. But in the same hand, if it's, if the permit is a, isn't a high number, it would be conceivable for us to be able to create an atmosphere of mediation for a future SDR and a potential neighbor. And then that way, we have, we can facilitate positive communication. I mean, that's just a thought. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Any other comments from the commission? Any comments from staff? I think what we've heard today is a lot of us are in favor of the moratorium. I know Commissioner Webb, to the point about having things kind of customized and individual to each community. I guess I have hesitation about that. I think, you know, kind of what we're charged with is to provide kind of an overarching management for all of the unincorporated areas. And I hate to kind of go down the slippery slope with it, we're treating every single area differently. But I think that can be part of the discussion as we go forward is as we kind of do our fact finding mission through all of the rest of the county. Commissioner Banks has her head up, hand up there.
This question is for Gail again. I'm looking at our little pie graph and I love, I love pictures. Thank you so much for that. But I was curious if you can provide to us what each current SDR policy is for, like say, Warranton. And then the separate one for Arch Cape and then what we currently have as a county as a whole. Because I know Arch Cape has developed their own, correct?
Right. Their ordinance has been in effect since 2003.
Right, right.
And so the pie graph represents rental units that are in unincorporated Clatsop, but have a warrant and a mailing address. So they are, they're covered under the other countywide ordinance. So they are, they're covered under the other countywide ordinance.
Okay, so they're covered under the countywide ordinance. So the Warrington, it's Warrington unincorporated then, not more City of Warrington? Okay. Does the City of Warrington then have their own STR policies?
Yes, they do.
So could we get all of the city policies, like Astoria, Warrington, Seaside, and see what they're doing? I mean, continuity across our area would be something that I, I would love to see for us, rather than bouncing around and creating. Because we discussed earlier with, with the masking policies, how everybody having different policies across the state and across traveling makes different, difficult for communication and so, and difficult for understanding. And so in order to alleviate stress across our county, I feel like we should really take a look at our municipality policies regarding STRs and, and take into account that so that we're not creating more chaos, I guess. So, thank you.
Whoops, Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. Well, and don't forget Cannon Beach has theirs as well. And, and what the, it's a whole spectrum. I looked at this for Dogami in 2013, and, and there's just this diversity. In terms of what happens in Jewell, there's illegal camping with illegal campfires in the woods. I talked last week to Neil Bond, the head of ODF's Fire Suppression Unit, Astoria. We were under red flag alert last Labor Day for wildfire danger that could have turned into a conflagration like we'd never seen. When the staffer was on his way to deal with a reported violation of an illegal campfire, he passed four other campfires. That's a total of five illegal campfires in the woods. Again, the neighbor that I have who loves to camp and make campfires had to have a campfire up until midnight on Sunday on Labor Day. People feel entitled to do what they want to do. How do we have conversations that lead us to be good neighbors, whether it's a day trip or temporary thing, whether it's a second homeowner, whether it's full-time neighbors? Because I'll tell you, we all have conflicts with each other. It is in the nature of human beings to have differing points of view and differences of opinion. Those have turned into conflicts repeatedly, and it's that dynamic that we have to address, no matter what the issue is. Public safety is compromised, public well-being is compromised, neighborhood livability is compromised. These are complex issues. I don't know how we solve them, but I know that we have to articulate them if we are to have a hope of solving them. So thank you to staff and, and to everybody who's written to us. Thank you for participating in our community development activity. Because whether you've been happy or unhappy, whether you've praised us or been critical, whether I think you told the truth or whether I think you didn't, you had your perception, you shared it. That's the mix that we're putting together to create a more positive, more participatory democratic process. That's a small D democratic process for anybody who's watching those things. That's a joke, you guys. Thank you. We are having participatory democracy here. This is how it works. We come together, we share our perceptions, our opinions, our feelings, but what we look for is how to be good neighbors together. So thanks to everybody who's part of this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Appreciate your sentiment. Commissioner Webb?
Um, one of the reasons that, that I think we need to, to have ordinances that are sensitive to the geographic area that we're talking about, it's one of the reasons that we, we do our comp plan the way we do. Because issues, development issues are different in different places in the county. And a lot of these are basic, some, I mean, other than the noise and those kinds of issues, good neighbor issues. A lot of the, these issues are about the carrying capacity of the land and that we have to get rid of waste. We have to supply people with fresh water. We have to make sure that they're treating the land appropriately. I mean, when we go into rural Clatsa County and start talking about fire danger, wow, I mean, that is just huge. And so I, I, I really appreciate the issue that it would be very nice to be able to have an omnibus ordinance, but, but I, I don't think we need to think that way because the relationship of these activities with the carrying capacity of the land. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I think, oh, I see Commissioner Bangs.
You can go ahead if you want. Sorry, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So a couple of things. I, I think that when we, we talk about carrying capacity of the land, we do have occupancy limits, correct, on our STRs, Gail?
Yes, they, they do have limitations based on the number of sleeping rooms, and in Arch Cape, the ordinance actually caps it at 14 maximum regardless.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for that. I just, I think about, I would be hesitant to put more rules and regulations on landowners that I wouldn't put on, you know, full-time landowner. I, I think that that always causes me to pause, that if I'm requesting these rules and regulations for short-term rentals, why, I, I would have to require them then also for a renter and then also for a landowner. And so we talk about carrying capacity of a community or carrying capacity of, of the land, and we all pay, they all pay the same taxes, is, is, I think, what I circle back to. And so I wouldn't want to push an additional tax or fee on an STR landowner without then looking at a full-time landowner. Another question is, is, is everybody, I, we, we all went through the, the public hearings as commissioners last week regarding putting homes into the Cannon Beach Fire District. And our homes in Falcon Cove in the Cannon Beach Fire District, where are those homes?
They, they are in the Cannon Beach District, yes.
I, I think when we look at our STRs, we also should look at making sure that they are in a fire district. And that way, they are guaranteed to have a resource go to their home in case of incidental fire. And it's just a thought process. I feel like it would be a safety measure. And then looking at, I don't know, I just, I'm going to pause there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Do we have any other comment from any members of the board? Mr. Thompson?
Just to clarify, they would get the fire protection. The question is whether or not they pay the taxes or have paid the taxes to support the fire district. But they would get the EMS service, they would get the fire service no matter what, and then be billed afterward if they weren't already a part of the fire district.
Thank you for clarifying, Commissioner Thompson. So I, I think from our discussion, and I think the direction would be to actually, to move for the six-month moratorium, if I'm not mistaken.
So Chair Quirrell, if I could, just for, for my own clarification, I thought I could just run through what, what I've heard, and then if the board is in agreement, you can nod, and if you're not, you can set, set, set me straight. So there were three recommendations. One is to initiate the six-month moratorium, and it looks like the board is in agreement with that. And then during that time, staff will work with your board, providing a lot more data, a lot more detail, and having conversations with the public at various times to help inform the good policy that'll come out the other side. And that we, although consolidation of the ordinances may be an outcome, it's to also be open-minded to what that outcome, what the best outcome should be, and just, we'll just deal with that as the information presents itself. And then the third is to revise the ordinance to strengthen and clarify code compliance, which I think is something that has been supported throughout and which has been why it's been amended before. So I think we have agreement, and if that is the case, then obviously, this will be the, just one of many, 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 many more discussions about this topic over the next six months. So, so staff will, will start working on the moratorium. So if that is where, where the board is.
I think you summed it up very well. Everyone? Yep, Commissioner Bangs has a question. You're muted.
Am I on now?
You are.
Can you hear me? Okay, okay. I just had a comment, and it's mainly in regards, I hear a lot of concern in the meeting regarding fire danger and rural areas. And I think it's a discussion that we may need to have with ODF and our rural law enforcement in the future. Because unlawful fires are actually considered a Class D misdemeanor. And then with the first, with the first warning, I guess, and then it goes Class C and then Class B. And I think that it might be something that we travel down the road and have a discussion with both ODF and our rural law enforcement, because fire danger is, is a real concern in rural areas. And there are methods that we can explore to not only educate, but also, you know, ha, have a consequence, because sometimes consequences are needed, so.
County Manager?
Chair Quirrell, members of the board, just really quickly, since fire has been discussed, I just want to share that staff met with a consultant the other day, and what we've, we're talking about was having a consultant work with us to create a very robust table where we can bring ODF, the Fire Defense Board, the individual fire agencies, cities, state parks and rec, and others at the table to talk about the, the regulatory framework for fires, to talk about the permitting process for fires, to talk about the public education process for fires, and talk about potential building, you know, code requirements regarding fires. And so, so we have been talking with a consultant who could bring in, they happen to have a, a fire background, and someone who you're familiar with, which is Brent Van Coolen, who was helping us through PSU on the strategic plan. He was an assistant fire chief over at TVFNR and has a lot of wildland fire experience too. So, so we are talking about this. We know it's a priority issue for your board and for the public. So I just wanted to share that, that we're starting to put a framework together, and we'll come to your board and provide a, a more detailed overview as we work through some of the initial details.
Fantastic. Glad to hear that. Commissioner Webb?
Um, yeah, one of the things, for instance, that I think we would probably take a different approach to in more rural and sparse, more sparsely populated areas of the county, is the issue, for instance, of, of requiring in order to obtain an STR license, that we would give, that we would require that the landowner landscape around the house in a fire suppression manner. I don't know what the formal words are for that, but there's a science to this. And so it's that kind of thing that might be a little bit different, that we might want to say, well, for, you know, in these parts of, in wooded areas of the county, however we want to define them. It's, it's those little things that, that just might be more appropriate in a, in a less dense popul, population. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I see Commissioner Thompson and then Commissioner Bangs. Mr. Thompson?
But the issue is, everybody has to be concerned about fire, not just STR. Part-time, full-time, day trip, everybody. So what the county manager is proposing is, I'm telling you, I am overjoyed to hear it and delighted, delighted, just delighted, because we need to move on this as quickly as possible. County Manager, thank you for hearing us and for acting so effectively.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Bangs?
Um, with any policy that we would place on an STR in regards to, like, landscaping, we would also, I would hesitate placing a policy as such and then not having the same policy for the next-door neighbor that was a full-time landowner. And so I, I just, I don't want to go down that path, me personally. I'm just going to put that out there. I don't want to personally go down that path. Though, fire danger is, like, it's a real concern. But as, as a county, I don't want to go down the path of mandating one landowner to do one thing and another, leaving them out. It creates, yeah.
Any other, Commissioner Webb?
Um, the problem is, I, I think, is one of legal, I, I think of legality. First of all, I, I have treated this whole STR issue as, as being not necessarily a manner of, of equality among landowners. Because a family who lives in the home that they own has a lot of freedom about, about a lot of things, about landscaping, about all kinds of things. What they do inside their home, et cetera, as long as it doesn't interfere with anybody else. But to me, people who own STRs are business owners. And we have lots of regulations that apply to businesses as opposed to, to homeowners who, and I, I think the difference between those two activities is very, very important. And I think it's, you know, it's an economic issue, it's a social issue, it's a neighborhood issue. We have, we have lots of constraints on the businesses that rent accommodations of all kinds all over the county. And they're far different and much more restrictive than, than the, the rules that homeowners who live in their houses have to operate under. And so I'm very sensitive to the difference, that one is a commercial enterprise and the other is, is a private residence. So I, I just would beg to differ about that issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Bangs, and then Commissioner Thompson?
I would just caution that if we go down that path, that we would also be addressing rentals, long-term rentals, hotels, and other type businesses. So I, I agree, STRs are a business. It's that, it's that which can of worms are we, how, how, how far into the can of worms are we going to want to go? And, and how many rules and regulations are, are we willing to place? And one thing we could do, though, in regards to fire, is require STRs to have a free ODF fire permit if, if their property renters are wishing to have a, a campfire or a burn barrel of such, that we would require them to be permitted. And that's a free process through ODF. And then that way, when the situation arises, it, it, it is in a, a well-regulated area.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Well, so I had a full-time neighbor who had a permit for a burn barrel, but he didn't burn the way he was supposed to. So just saying, Commissioner Bangs, I think you're optimistic about that. In my point of view, fire is like light. We don't distinguish between short-term rentals and any other kind of occupation. We just say, look, if your light invades somebody else's space, you can't do it. Same thing with fire. This is an air quality This is an air quality issue, it's a public safety issue. I mean, people can die and their stuff can get burned up. I mean, this is a big deal. So I think that what people do inside their homes is their own business. I think to the extent that it impacts their neighbors, it's a matter of public concern, and we need a compassionate, empathetic, complete community conversation on issues that are of common concern. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other questions or comments from the members of the board? I think we've just skimmed the surface of this, uh, complex land use issue, but a good discussion. Thank you very much, Director Henriksen.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next item, which is the Public Safety Communications Plan, and our county emergency manager, Tiffany Brown.
Thank you, Chair Quirrell. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Tiffany Brown, and I'm the county emergency manager. I'm here to talk to you, uh, today a little bit about a project that we've had going on, uh, since last November, and that is the Public Safety Communications Plan.
Grab it. Tiffany, we just have a little trouble hearing you.
Okay.
Audio's a little soft.
How's that? Is that better with the screen closer?
That's just a little bit muffled there, a little bit.
Let me try a different, let me try something else.
Okay.
How's this microphone?
Perfect, sounds great.
Good. Okay, well, I'm here today to talk to you about the, a, a project we've had underway since last November, and that is the Public Safety Communications Plan. I'll spend just a minute talking about what that is, since we have a lot of things called communications plans, uh, rolling around. This is a public safety communications plan. It deals specifically with communication systems that have to do with emergency management. So that is the existing public safety network that our fire and police use that include, uh, fixed, mobile, and portable equipment. Um, our plan also includes auxiliary systems, which are the public alert and warning sirens, mass notification system, and ham radio operators. So that's a little bit about what the plan includes, um, in terms of who it covers. We wrote a grant for this plan about two years ago. Why? Because people were not, jurisdictions were not able to apply for homeland security communication projects unless there was a viable communications plan in place. So that was the short-term reason. The long-term objective was to develop a plan that had all of the information about communications, um, in one place in Clatsop County. We have a very, um, uh, seasoned, uh, well-versed group of, uh, multi-disciplined jurisdictional partners that run, um, and oversee maintenance of our communication systems, and they do a good job. Um, but we don't have all that information captured in one place. And so that was the other intent of the plan. So we got the grant, we got a grant for $60,000. And last fall, we developed a multidisciplinary work group, uh, to tackle the project. We issued an RFP, we identified a contractor, and in November, that contractor started reaching out to, uh, 23 stakeholder partners that are involved in our communications, everyone from fire districts to state agencies to, um, ham radio operators. Uh, they compiled that information, and in the spring, they delivered a draft plan to us. Um, we took a look at that, and we finalized the plan in May. I'm just going to take a minute to, uh, review the key recommendations made by our contractor, AdCom, uh, regarding the final draft of the Public Safety Communications Plan. The first is to improve equipment, specifically, uh, higher, harden the wireless technology and develop a wireless technology improvement plan. And I know that some of that has been spurred by the pandemic and the increased use of wireless technology in the county. The second recommendation had to do with our dispatch centers. And while there were equipment recommendations, the primary recommendation was that the county look toward, uh, the opportunity to consolidate dispatch centers. The third recommendation really relates to the other two, and that was that the county consider developing a governance structure for the communications group. They've done a great job, but the contractors believe that formalizing that group, um, augmenting maybe some of the stakeholder partners would help us be more strategic moving forward, um, we're better together, and we can do more, um, with, with more partners at the table. So, um, that plan, um, and I apologize, Teresa let me know before the meeting today that that hadn't been uploaded. I sent it to you prior to the meeting. Um, that plan is completed. And at the close of the presentation, we talked about next steps, and the work group agreed, um, that a logical next step would be to start looking at 911 consolidation just from a preliminary, uh, planning standpoint. We noticed with the legislation this year around 911 consolidation, that money was being given out for consolidation plans. And that suggests that a consolidation plan may be required to take advantage of, uh, grant funding for 911 consolidation on the road. So that's a conversation for the county manager and the sheriff to have with the rest of you. This is simply a piece to start teeing that up and giving the resort, putting the resources in place that are needed to have that larger conversation. I mentioned this was a $60,000 award. The communications plan I sent you today cost $30,000. So at the close of that presentation from AdCom, the group decided to move forward and allocate the balance of the award to developing a 911 consolidation plan. I'm in the process of developing that scope of work this week. I have three county consolidation plans on my desk. Um, I expect that we'll be securing a contract with AdCom in the next month, and we hope to have that plan finished by the fall, September 30th specifically. Uh, that's the, that is the end of my presentation regarding the communications plan. Um, unless you have any questions?
Any questions for our county emergency manager? Commissioner Thompson?
It's just wonderful. Consolidated 911, happy day, well done.
Agreed.
Well, it's, it's simply a recommendation at this point, but I sure have been hearing a lot about it lately.
We can hope.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, I can't, I don't know who was first. Commissioner Banks?
Um, I just want to say how exciting it is to hear, and that I had a lot of really good conversations with other counties at my county college regarding consolidating 911. And I'm really hoping that it will relieve some staffing, um, pressures in our various 911 centers, especially Astoria. So it, it, it's good news. I'm, I'm glad that we're exploring it. I know it's not a done deal, but I'm glad we're exploring it, and I'm glad we have the funding to do so.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, um, you mentioned that the first recommendation, um, was about governance, and I'm not clear about, about what that would look like. It would, it would be something, what, an advisory group, basically to the county? Or tell me what that would look like.
Well, it could look a number of different ways. It could be a committee, much like the committees that we have. It could be a standalone group. Um, but most importantly, it would be a group that would work cohesively and strategically for more long-term goals in terms of investment, um, and improvements to the system. And it is one of the best practices, uh, recommended by SafeCom, which is the, the industry leader in terms of setting benchmarks and, um, and best practices for the communications environment.
Cool, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Uh, Commissioner Banks?
I'm looking at a graphic, append- appendix C, and just for, for, you know, my layman's thought process here, amateur radio coverage, what, is that like ham radio?
Yes, amateur radio is, is ham radio. And it is, um, it just, if I can just say a word about it, it is our redundant, it is the redundant system for our public safety communications. Um, we, uh, are, are well-known in the state of Oregon for having a robust amateur radio system and network. We have, uh, we have a, a big volunteer corps, uh, but most notably, uh, our private club with whom the county, um, contracts and, and does a lot of work. Uh, we have a redundant mesh network. Uh, several of the cities have a contract with that club. And in the case of an emergency, um, if they lost even internet, they would be able to access that network to receive both audio and digital communications. So it's a, it's a really important piece of our, our overall public safety communications. We don't think about it a lot when, when everything's up and running. Uh, well, some of us do. Um, but, but it's an important piece to have in the communications plan.
I, I just think it's neat. I, I, ham radio is a, a lost art, in my opinion. Uh, my grandfather used to, to do ham radio, and so I'd, I, I just think it's a neat little tidbit of information, so thank you.
I know they proved their worth during the storm in 2007. Very thankful for them and being able to keep communications going throughout the county. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, um, I noticed that, uh, the Coast Guard did not respond, um, to the consultant's inquiries. What? Who do we need to go hammer for that? I would think.
Well, I don't think anyone. I think, um, we know who that person is, and I wasn't aware that they didn't connect. I think they had every intention of connecting. But I will tell you that we have had ongoing challenges, um, interfacing with Coast Guard, um, communications. We had, in fact, we had the naval event two years ago, and we managed to achieve ship-to-shore communications with the US Navy, but, but we were still unable to, um, communicate with the Coast Guard from the county EOC. So, um, the, the plan is in its final stages, but I think having it in front of the board this week has prompted some interest. We may have some other, um, updates or edits, and maybe that'll be one of them. I can circle back and ask them if they'd like to provide some input. Thank you for noticing.
And don't, you know, don't hesitate to call on us. Um, the Coast Guard always returns my calls.
Great. Thank you for that offer.
And, and, you know, we are a Coast Guard city. Two of the members of the Astoria City Council are ex-Coach Guard officers. You know, please don't let that happen again. And because we can, we can help out with things like that, with the federal kind of stuff. Okay?
Any other comments, questions from the members of the board? Don't see any. Great job, Tiffany. This is fantastic. A, a good report and a lot of hard work, so glad to see it.
Thank you, and thank you for your interest. I'll report back when we get further down the road on the consolidation plan.
Sounds great. Thank you. Um, that was the last item on our agenda for the work session. Uh, we will go ahead and adjourn into an executive session, and I'll read this script. The Clatsop County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session. The executive session is held pursuant to-